I call this planning board meeting to order Wednesday, September 12. We have a quorum. We have Ted, Tara, Sarah, Barbara, and myself, along with Bill and Max and Trusty Secretary Susan, and we're ready to go. So we have a quorum. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay. We could adjust the agenda and do the application first, or we can talk about the shoreline.
So the applicant, there's no applicant?
There is a dear in Delaware.
Yeah, part of, yeah, he'd asked, part of the application was asking that not be here.
We have a statement to preface that.
Okay. So we could change the order depending on what the board would like to do time-wise? Would you rather get to that and get that out of the way first and then do the shoreline, or?
Does it matter?
Um, I guess it doesn't really. Okay. So we'll stick with the way Max has drawn it up.
Same amount of time.
So minutes. We have minutes of the August 8 meeting and August 22 meeting.
Indeed.
I didn't find anything in them. Has everybody had a chance to look at them or have any comments or changes?
There's no comments on August 8. I have comments on the 22nd.
Okay. Fire away.
All right. Susan, on August 22, on the second page, approximately halfway down, page 7 through 10, section 3, there's a sentence there in that paragraph. Pilot said this section has little applicability to Waldeboro as we don't have old mill buildings on the river. I actually believe that was either Simpson or Knavehauer.
You're saying you didn't say that?
No, I questioned whether we should address the sentence itself to make it more relevant to Waldeboro, but it was just determined that because we didn't have many buildings that even fit the description, it wasn't worth addressing at that time, so.
How would you like to change the minute?
I'd just say probably "it was determined," and may not even have to attribute the quote.
It was determined that this section has little applicability?
No, no, I don't think that's correct, though. My recollection from the original discussion on that was that we put that section in because of the Button Factory and the interest of Waldeboro maybe using that in the future for something, and so there was that, it was all about that one building.
So that section, as I remember, was already introduced, and we had the option to keep it or drop it. Is that correct? That was because of the downtown revitalization language introduced through Lewiston?
And able to put a trail near the water. We just kept it in because we felt we had at least one building and...
But it was specific to mills, and my question was whether we needed to expand it to commercial and industrial use buildings and not just leave it at mills, so.
Or why not just say buildings?
I don't remember. I don't remember how far that conversation went, other than I know, I think Scott, you brought up the Button Factory was an example, because we were struggling with what was...
I recall having a long discussion about it, and we decided to leave it the way it was.
We have numerous buildings, in my opinion, that could qualify.
Yeah, stores.
Stores, Lumber Yard, VFW Hall, Button Factory, list goes on and on.
But those buildings don't have decks over the river. This is talking about exempting a deck over a river from shoreline setback requirements. The Button Factory doesn't have a deck.
No, but if, but it would allow one to be put on. It doesn't mean that it has one now. It would allow that to happen.
Yeah, that was a specific addition to the ordinance to allow trails and amenities along the rivers, particularly in built-up areas.
So we're gonna...
Does that make sense?
Either way, the quote wasn't attributed to me, because that, I was pushing to expand, and it was just, at the time, it was, we don't have the old mills, so I think maybe there was confusion over what I was asking.
So you'd like to have Pilot said, taken out, no matter what else we do. Is that right? Okay.
Does that mean we need to revisit this in the ordinance?
Well, the ordinance, my, and this, just with my recollection, we decided to leave it because they said, "A deck over a river may be exempted from the shoreline setback requirements if it is part of a downtown revitalization project that is defined in a project plan approved by the legislative body of the municipality, and may include the revitalization of structures formerly used as mills that do not meet the structure setback requirements." So it's still relatively broad and not, it's not restricted to just mills.
Would that include stores, though?
Yeah, stores. It could be, it could be some of the downtown buildings. There's not, you know...
It just said it.
Stores aren't mills. Downtown buildings aren't mills, so should it be another word instead of mills?
Leave it a bill.
Could include...
But it, but it says "and may include."
Yeah, so, and may not include.
May not include. Doesn't have to be a mill.
Okay.
Could be anything.
So you are right. My interpretation was off. I just didn't want the quote attributed.
We may never use it.
So, but, so I would strike that whole sentence.
Strike the sentence.
Thank you.
Does the group agree with that suggestion?
Yep.
Yep.
Delete.
And then my only other question was Article 16 definitions. The group at tonight's meeting did not discuss these additions and changes. We did kind of discuss the definitions, but, so I don't know if we need to really call attention. It's immaterial, and I'll go whichever way the group wants to go.
So what, I'm sorry, what you...
Third page, Article 16 definition.
Right.
The group at tonight's meeting did not discuss these additions and changes.
I thought that's what we, I thought we didn't discuss it.
We didn't discuss them at all. We discussed adding a couple and went over, it was a very vague, but not much, so I just don't know if it's necessary to call it out.
Right.
Do you want to just delete the second sentence?
Yeah.
That would appear to be desirable.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Okay.
The next steps, next, could be part of next step, but, I mean, it implies that we've, are fine with them, but we haven't really discussed them yet.
Anybody else have any suggestions or comments on either sets of minutes? Are we ready to?
I move we accept the minutes as amended.
Second motion.
You're seconding that, Tara?
I am.
And the amendments are the deletion of the two sentences that have been identified.
So far, I just want to make sure Barbara and Sarah are okay.
And this is a vote on both the 8th and the 22nd.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Barbara's opposed.
No, I'm aye. Sarah's just late. I was late, aye.
I'm an aye.
Thank you.
I'm aye, too.
Okay. So, um, ah, no, okay. I was misreading the minutes. So now we are on to the site review, correct, unless there's other new business?
No.
Okay.
Just don't want to preface, and I put the foundation on the site. This was brought in front of the board because we have in the tower section, wireless tower section, our definition of expansion is very, very broad, so, because technically, we probably would not normally consider this an expansion, because they're not building outside of the fenced area, there's no structure or anything like that, other than a concrete pad and a gen set, and they're not increasing the height of the tower, they're just adding antennae and a cable tray, obviously, on that. So in many other ordinances or in other situations, we probably would not consider that an expansion, except for the language in our, in our ordinances includes any kind of addition or change.
Yeah, but I like this. It's nice to hear about this stuff before.
Yes.
Gee, there's stuff happening at the wireless tower. How come you don't know anything about it? So, so, and the other part of it was the diesel, adding a generator, which was surprising to me that there was a cell tower there that did not have a generator associated with it already.
This would handle the new antennae.
Ah, I see.
Each server is responsible for...
Oh, I see.
Power and their equipment.
Wow, okay.
Unless they have some agreement to share.
Okay.
Emergency power.
Okay. Was there anything else in terms of?
So, so, the lines go down, power goes out. How many generators are operating out of that site? How many are there now? Do we, do we know?
No, we don't know. Probably at least...
Do you have a larger map besides these, or is this how?
He just showed the...
That's what he submitted for the final report.
He just showed the, the expansion. I don't believe he showed what else is there.
Well, there's a little bit of a site map, but it's tiny.
Close, close, close.
I was just curious, because there are some, a house not too far away, and I'm wondering...
Yeah, it's a switch, it's a switching station there.
Yeah, but there are generators, you just said. Like, are there going to be three generators running for three days if there's a power outage in the neighborhood?
Yes.
And I assume we have, like, their license on file?
And I had a question, which I sent to Max, and he replied, I think he replied only to me, which was, I didn't see any evidence of any diesel fuel supply, like a tank or something, but Max said he, that, it's, it's a single unit, the generator comes with its own tank that's double-walled, and so there is a, there is a tank associated with it.
Figure map.
They specify diesel and...
I'm sorry.
I wouldn't...
Help me look at this. We can all look. These are big enough. Oh, there's a bigger version of the same thing. Proposed T-Mobile equipment. That, I think, is labeled, that's an existing shelter.
Diesel freezes.
This has doors on it.
One of these things. Where's the symbols?
Proposed utility. Existing concrete pad.
Okay, proposed concrete pad.
For the T-Mobile stuff.
Is that the generator?
Yes, because it's tied down. I believe that that, this is the, up on the tower, equipment. This is the generator. See the tie-down things?
Six-foot-eight pad, generator pad.
Mm-hmm.
With the Delta generator, okay.
And there's the proposed Purcell, so there's a cabinet associated with it, control cabinet.
Okay.
And it's pretty locked, it's good, I guess these posts are around it to, doesn't look like it's going to go anywhere. This is...
Not.
Trench, compact fill. So it doesn't change the footprint, so that's, I don't see anything here that indicates other generators, so.
He would not have shown those.
No.
He would have just shown what they were going to have.
It's hard to conceive someone, another company having, having equipment up there without a generator associated with it.
Some companies, if the access is easy, they, they'll roll one in, but...
Yeah.
That doesn't always work, depending on, you know, if it's snow or ice or something like that, so that's why they usually will set up an emergency gen set.
Well, as I well know, having one all the time that's completely connected and automatic doesn't always work when the power goes out.
Where's the tower on this? Where's the?
Here it is.
So it's in the middle of...
Yeah, it's got to be right on top of this.
The tower?
Here's a post, there's a post, there's a post.
Oh, there's the pads, okay.
There's the pads right there.
I was just gonna say, because it took me like an hour to figure out where it was.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. There's three.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm glad I'm not going up there. That's all I get to say.
So how much wind does a tower that high, in that construction, built for?
When I was a kid, fearless, but, how old do I get?
Given that this is hurricane season, I thought I would ask.
They are subject to the, they're subject to building code, they're designed to collapse, and they would be designed to the hurricane load, appropriate for the area, so.
So if there's too much wind, they just...
Well, no, if, well, if they're in danger of collapsing, instead of spalling over that way, they kind of collapse down. Well, relatively speaking, down.
You still don't want to be under it.
They're not going to go, like, we limit them to under 200 feet, so they're not going to fall like 200 feet over, but they'll fall within a small footprint.
Really? This is a major corporation, and these folks have so many operations in different places, they know exactly what they're doing. They don't tend to make mistakes.
No, and they have a lot of codes.
Sometimes the monopoles tip, like a portion of it tips, and the, what do they call those? The cage ones, that's not the correct term, those will collapse in on themselves, if all goes right.
When it's going bad.
They also have to show that, that the tower can handle the antennae. And this one will handle additional antennae. Because in Waldeboro, we only, we have limited locations where we allow them.
How many?
We have two.
Where's the other one? The tower, where's the other tower in Waldeboro?
There's one right up at the top, that way, and then...
Who? The one we're talking about is off Route 1 up this way, right? Where's the other one?
Blinn's.
Or it's Moody's?
Yeah. No, out in that direction. You see it, you see it off Route 1. When you're on the hill, you can see it in the distance. It's right off near 235, somewhere in there.
Oh, okay, north of Route 1. Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Of course, that's immaterial relative to this. I'm just curious.
Well, I don't see any issues looking at this.
I think the waiver requests are reasonable.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments or concerns?
So, let me just ask you, Bill, so if they want to do anything, suppose they want to, anything that happens on that site, they have to come in front of the planning board right now?
Yeah.
So if they ever wanted to increase the tower height and...
Oh, yeah, now, that's, that's a legitimate, you know, expansion, you know, like that. Or if they wanted to increase the site at the base, you know, that is, that is legitimate. But things like this, we're not really, we're adding things to it, but we're not really expanding, you know, substantially. That might be something we look at at the ordinance, too. But definitely, if they want to increase the height for the other area or something, sure.
Well, it's an important...
Or even the access room.
Yeah.
That could be a big issue.
Well, that one's short, fortunately.
Windy here, yeah, in other locations.
Yeah. Well, important infrastructure these days, safety issue, too. Okay, I will call for a motion to accept this and approve, approve this application.
I submit a motion for American Tower Corporation to make these additions onto their tower site as submitted.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anything else on this? Everybody comfortable? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The motion is to make the specified additions to the T-Mobile tower.
It's approving their application to make those additions, right?
Yeah. So, this application, I thought they're from North Carolina, but then this says Woburn, Mass., and then we have Maryland on here. So who the heck are these people?
Probably multiple corporate offices.
The who's making the application?
T-Mobile is in Maryland, local contact is in Woburn. He's the local contact, is Woburn.
Sure.
We have the engineer, the project officer.
It's slightly closer than Maryland.
Yeah, we were dealing with the engineering firm.
Oh, and then the engineer is in North Carolina.
Patrick Barry.
My fault.
Okay.
Get a hold of them today, because you might be in tomorrow.
Oh, boy.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Yeah.
Poor taste.
Hopefully, people will be safe. So, no pre-application yet? You said someone might yet appear at some point?
Jeff will probably be here at 6:30. He keeps the signatures anyways for...
Oh, okay.
The approval.
Date, 9, 12, 13.
This is a free application?
Yeah, free application, possibly for a B and B from Jeff. Jeffurd.
Jeffurd.
From Jeff.
Jeffurd?
Hi, Jeffurd.
We just have to say Jeff, and we know who everyone's talking about?
I didn't.
When we were in the select board meeting, they said I have an email from Barbara, and we were all like, oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, so, why don't we start on the, the select board meeting and follow-up? So, as you all know, having participated, we had a lot of discussions on the manure setback and also on the related tilling and grazing setback, which are all set at 100 feet. So we had a lot of discussion, and there was discussion at the select board likewise, and with the idea that, gee, should we increase it? Let's be safe, but Tara was there as well. We had the similar discussion that we had as a board, which was, well, if we increase it, what do we increase it to, and how much benefit would it have, et cetera. So, at the select board meeting, Julie Kaiser and Abdon Simmons both said that they had a contact that they had worked with at the agriculture department that could be helpful, and so I agreed to contact him. Julie sent me the information. I contacted him, and we...
Which guy was that?
He, what's that?
What's his name?
Matthew.
I will, I'll go through that. I'll tell you.
Oh, that guy. I did get that email.
His, his name is, anyway, so, I contacted him, we had a very nice discussion. I wrote up a summary of our discussion, and I sent it to him for editing to make sure that it properly represented his opinions, and he made two relatively minor editorial suggestions, and, which I accepted, and so that's what I put in my email that I sent to the planning board and to the select board, and I thought, for the purposes of public disclosure, that I would simply read this into the, into the minutes, and then you have a copy and a sip of water before I do that. Okay, so...
You don't have to sing it.
So, rather than, so I'll just repeat it, as opposed to contemporizing. Summary of 8/31/2018, discussion with Matthew Randall, Agriculture Compliance Supervisor for the State of Maine regarding the Waldeboro Land Use Ordinance, Article 7, Shoreland Zoning, specifically on manure storage, tilling, and grazing setbacks. On 8/31/2018, I had a very helpful discussion with Matthew Randall, Agriculture Compliance Supervisor for the State of Maine. Our discussion was prompted by concern within the planning and select boards about the setback for manure storage and possible midomic river contamination. We also discussed the related tilling and grazing setbacks, which are all consistent at 100 feet. Matthew started by emphasizing that the state guidelines are designed to go across various situations, soil types, and ground slopes, which have all been taken into account in developing a conservative setback to protect our water bodies. He argues that the setback could be smaller and still be protective. It is, of course, possible that a single case might cause an issue if, say, for example, someone dumped a large pile of manure at the 100-foot mark under the drip edge of a large barn roof. Nevertheless, he is fairly comfortable with the current setback and prefers that any specific locations of concern be brought to their attention so they can look at it and recommend action. Regarding the tillage setback, Matthew argued that tillage is a great thing. Fertilization, the adding of air spaces to the soil, and the vegetation, which comes after, are improvements for nutrient uptake and, uptake and bacteria reduction. This provides an improved buffer. Similarly, grazing and the animal droppings it generates encourages better filtering growth. The animals will not eat right around the piles, which then grow taller grass with stronger root systems. In total, allowing maintenance uses of the land to build up growth is actually preferred for a buffer zone along our shorelines. Matthew is far more concerned with dogs and dog kennels. Dog waste has more bacteria than human, horse, and cow manure combined. As an aside, I've heard lots of comments about the tight restrictions Waldeboro put on dog walking in our water-adjacent parks. This information helps to make clear why that restriction makes sense. Fowl manure is also very high in bacteria load. However, chickens are inside much of the time, night and winter, so in general are not a large concern. We briefly discussed Title VII, Chapter 6, the Right to Farm Act. Theoretically, increasing the setbacks beyond the state limits would have to be looked at by the state's legal department for possible effect on the right to farm. In summary, Matthew recommends that we stay the course and advocates his confidence in the setback limits and that we not change them. Awareness and management with state support are strongly encouraged. Matthew emphasized how intent the state is on responding quickly and fully to any specific site concern that might come up. Scott Simpson, Chairman, Waldeboro Planning Board, 9/7/2018.
So, is he from Department of Ag Forestry and Conservation?
Ag Forestry and Ag are two different offices now, I believe.
Oh, they split them up?
No.
I thought they... Are they, oh, D A C F, yeah.
But they're different departments in that.
Divisions, division offices, yeah.
But which department is this guy from?
Department of Agriculture. Seems to have his act together very nicely.
He, he was very knowledgeable, and he did cite a number of specific cases and things, you know, different locations where they've gone in and looked and made adjustments and things, but he's, he was pretty compelling.
I got confused when you were reading there. You were talking about tilling, and then it quickly went to, it seemed like a pasture kind of thing, where you have manure creating, you know, dumps and grass going, but just before that, in the same paragraph, you're talking about tilling, which is completely different than grazing.
There was a paragraph on both regarding, because the tilling, tilling, grazing, and manure storage setbacks are all the same at 100 feet, and they're all part of the same section in the shoreline zoning article. And so regarding the tillage, he's saying that's good because you're working air into the soil, and you're fertilizing, and you get stronger root structure, and the type of crops that are grown are actually better than the natural layer at being a filtering, that it's better than what's normally there.
Okay.
And regarding grazing, similarly, he said grazing of animals up to the 100-foot is actually good for, similarly, in that the animals don't eat around the pile, and stuff grows up and creates, creates stronger root systems, which acts as a better buffer.
Right.
So that was his argument.
So, and when he talks about how the 100-foot setback thing, determination that was determined many, many, quite a few decades ago, works in various situations, and take into account all kinds of situations, is he saying that it's possible you could have a manure pile 20 feet from a river if you had all, you know, great soil and great drainage, and it was relatively flat versus, I mean, is this averaging the 100 feet? Does that come up with an average, or is that taking care of the worst-case scenario?
No, he said, he said it's a, it's a worst, he said, you, you could still be protective and be closer, and he's saying, basically, that this is like a worst, it's, it's to account for a wide range of different situations and then be a conservative number that's protective. That's what he's, that's what he's saying.
I want to ask a clarifying question of Bill. The many, many years ago piece, if they're updating this every year or every few years, are they also going in and obviously doing some studies to see whether this is accurate, or is it just the language?
There's been, no, there's been some studies ongoing, but the big move, to answer Barbara some of your question, the 100-foot setback, it used to be 75 for the longest of times, and then, I think it was 50 way back in the 70s, but there has been some data... But there has been some data that... That showed that the, um, the minimum setback that you need from the shore, all things being equal, has to be at least 50. You know? And there is some studies that point, you know, 50s is the point mark. The State of Maine took the... Made the move that we're going to increase it to 50, excuse me, to 100, to account for a lot of variables. One of which was the quality of the buffer was the largest. And the biggest, um, condition was the difference between a very stable forestry buffer that has a duff layer, which is excellent, versus, you know, a forestry that doesn't have a lot of duff, or a grassy area which doesn't really allow a lot of filtering. So, that's why they went to that extra 100. But one of the things that doesn't... Kind of gets mixed in this discussion is... Is that the quality of really making this work is the quality of that buffer. And 100-foot back works excellent if we have a canopy, um, low ground cover, duff, and shrubs. It will work well. If we don't have that...
Yep.
I would say that with the thousands and thousands of water tests done here in the State of Maine, they're constantly reviewing the details of how efficient and effective this is, and this is accumulation of massive numbers of details. And I'm impressed that they did increase it to 100.
I do... Oh, sorry, Barbara.
Go ahead.
Oh, one of the things that I want to say was Bob Butler. Memory foggy. During the meeting, he brought up tillage specifically, and I thought he made a really interesting point about maybe adopting or specifying in the ordinance about tilling next to the shoreline and doing it sort of horizontal to the shoreline. Is that something we could definitely look at? Would that help?
Well, the...
To the grain, you mean? It should be horizontal, perpendicular to the grain is what he meant.
Okay.
What's missing here is that the activity is supposed to be subject to BMPs, and those BMPs address things like that.
BMPs? Best management.
Best management practices. So, they're supposed to follow those things, you know, also avoiding concentrated flows and things like that.
Well, best management practices and things like, you know, thing that's not in our ordinance as far as protecting water quality specifically is the... Because you have to go to another department to find out the information, whereas like the information about vernal pools, for instance, you have to find that out through DEP. So, you know, somebody just arriving to town and starting to do stuff may not know that there are rules about how far you set your animals, your barn, whatever, from a vernal pool. That's like in a completely different part of our regulation. So, it's just kind of interesting. You're not getting a complete picture when you're trying to set up your farm about best water management practices, you know?
Yeah. I'm not shocked, but...
Yeah. So, it could be that...
Doesn't make it easy, but...
Well, Shoreland zoning is narrow, too. I mean, we're only dealing with, you know, 250 feet from major water bodies and some streams and some wetlands. It doesn't include all water bodies or wetlands.
Right. But it has some semblance to the drainage maps.
Absolutely.
Going into the river, so there's some connections there. Now, the other thing about, I think, you know, this guy is great, obviously, he's pro-agriculture, you know, and there's a lot of interesting things going on with livestock engraving, grave, grazing, and pasture regeneration and stuff. But the other thing that, you know, isn't his purview is these kind of intense storm events, water, like the rain the other day? How much water did we get in one day?
Two inches.
We got three and a quarter at my house.
We got a lot of water in one session, and it was on dry, hard ground.
Yeah.
I just bring that up. We're going to get more of that kind of stuff. So, it's something that...
So, it's a lot of runoff.
It's a ton of runoff, yeah.
Do we have a committee here in town? I... I don't know. I profess to not know all the committees is dedicated specifically to the agriculture community, no? And I just think, like, when we talk about awareness, and I have beat this horse, and I'll beat it again, it's not funny. Kind of funny, actually, but just...
The horse is dead. Get out of the saddle.
The horse is dead. I'm talking agriculture, of course. But just around, you know, we can change an ordinance all we want, but if we're not getting the message out there about what we're hoping to accomplish, and you make an excellent point that all of this information is really siloed, um, if... If this was a project or a committee to even put together a small pamphlet with that need-to-know information, and then we're handing it out at the garden shops or, you know, the hardware stores, or wherever people are getting their grain and their manure and things, and sort of welcoming people to town along with the other pamphlets, that they could have this really short, comprehensive, high-level view and some contact information, that would be a really good resource so that we know we're doing our best that we can, which is, I know what the Select Board wants, to get this information out. We do want to support the farming and agriculture. This is super important to this area, but also, you know, balancing that against the needs of the fishing community and the river.
We've been talking about getting a how-to-do-business-in-Waldeboro-hand brochure out for, like, five years.
Well, this isn't even... And I agree with both of you. I think it's beyond the business because you have that... You have homeowners with dogs, horses, whatever, that might... Because frankly, you know, because I think there's been a lot of work and study into... Into the background for this in terms of figuring out the setbacks and all the testing that's been done in the river. But none of that matters if somebody doesn't know or care or pay any attention to what the ordinances are, and they aren't thinking about it. And so, the awareness and the... That awareness, and I think it goes to everybody. I mean, it's not... There's not that many people and homeowners in town that we can't figure out some way to...
What interest?
I mean, it's... I mean, I think most people that live here understand the importance of protecting the river, but getting people to think about... Think about things carefully before they do stuff, I think is... I don't... So, we have been talking about it for five years, and we haven't done it. So, what should we do?
One of the interesting directions that I think we might be considering is people buying... New people buying property. What goes... What are the details associated with the new purchase of property that you may not understand? There's a list of situations that would go a long way to helping you utilize your property properly.
Yeah.
New homeowners of any sort could be quite advantageous.
Yep. And you should test for radon.
I was thinking the same thing. Test your well, whatever you do.
Bill?
We talked, you know, a little bit about kind of taking a watershed approach because then we could, you know, it goes beyond shoreline zoning. And we have to do, I think, there's some regulation we need to put in place. There needs to be more better practice here internally, you know, when... We need to do a better job looking at erosion control plans when we issue normal permits and things like that. That will make a big difference on that. Stormwater standards need to be updated. That will make a big difference. And then the other component is the voluntary compliance. Some communities, this is very effective, they give out a plaque or something they could put on their lawn saying they're a watershed, something, or compliant place.
Well, that's very nice.
You know, and it's a thing that, you know, they may renew every couple of years. The conservation commissions have done this very effectively. But what it does is that you kind of recognize the person's, whatever they're doing with a farming, forestry, it doesn't matter, that they're in compliance with how they treat the land on that. And if you...
Does our conservation commission deal with that?
No. No, we would... That would be something we'd have to put in place. But it's one of those things that kind of raises the awareness and awards people for doing the good thing. One community that I read, and I thought this was a great idea, they hold a... One of them holds an annual summer little barbecue for all the people that participate, and they get donations to make hot dogs and hamburger. It's just some little event. Another community holds a raffle once a year, and the only people who are eligible to participate are the people who are part of this volunteer group or something. It's just little quirky things that, you know, it's just that, you know, it's better to, you know, catch a bird with honey than, you know, or whatever kind of thing, you know? But it has to be, you know, compliments all the other things you do.
What would it cost to send a letter to every homeowner in town?
We could do bulk mailing.
Yeah?
Yeah.
How much would that cost?
I would guess, the last time, about $800, $900. My guess, we'd have to get...
Do we have a budget?
No.
We don't have a budget. Julie, no.
You have to send something out compelling, otherwise it gets tossed.
Yeah.
It really, you know...
The situations you are mentioning, probably in the old days, going back a few decades, were done by the local grange. And without the grange and the games falling apart, we've got to step into some of those shoes.
But, you know, there's a lot of younger farmers.
Oh, yeah.
Places where they... That word can get out. I mean, there is other venues that they're using to communicate.
But I think, too, that there's, again, a lot of shoreline homeowners that aren't farmers, and they... But it's still... That awareness could still be valuable.
I mean, right now, a contractor has to be certified to work in the shoreline zone. Yeah?
Really?
So, that's a whole other area that's been brought into the fold.
Do the contractors know this?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just...
That's a work in progress.
Okay. I was just...
But it takes a couple of years for, you know... But at least it's been around for a while, and it, you know, it adds a level of expertise and professionalism, you know, which makes it a big difference.
So, when someone buys a new house in town, they have to come into the town office, right? And do something?
I don't find that experience...
I mean, well, they have to register to vote or things like that. But unless they're obtaining a permit...
Okay, never mind. For some reason, I was thinking that they would come into the town office, and that way, they could be given something at that time.
We know when property is transferred, yes, so we could make a...
Transfer to...
We sometimes send out a little welcoming thing, you know? You need, you know, the staff to do that, but we do know when that occurs.
I was just trying to think of some way to get the word out without spending the $800 or $900 on a stamp.
Yeah. Yeah, because even like putting something in a paper doesn't reach... A lot of people don't get the paper.
Nope. Got that right.
Doesn't work. A lot of people don't check the website. So, there's a lot of...
You have to do many different things.
Yeah.
I worked with a lumber store once, years ago, to make a display of mulches and drainage things and culverts, and he kind of just put them in, you know, like as you would display them on that there, and it was very effective because people could see, and they bought his product because, you know, he said that, you know? But little foolish things like that, that you just, you know, they have to be like a shotgun approach. You have to do a lot of that little stuff.
Yep.
The old days, you could just hang out in the landfill, and you'd see everybody in town sooner or later, but doesn't...
We pitched that idea for another outreach effort. Like Hannaford Post Office.
Yeah.
Transfer station. We'll find everybody eventually.
We passed out... Yeah. We just did something just for, you know, just some options to look at on setback. But these, I mean, these are just... They have to be fleshed in. They're just a very, very basic approach, just so you can see that how things are done in other areas.
When you say other areas, what do you mean where?
The first one is from Ottawa. They base their setbacks on slope. So, less than 4%, it's 100 feet, and then, you know, slopes over 12%, they're not allowed. But that, the standard doesn't deal anything with a buffer at all.
Right.
And the option... Good.
I'm sorry. Does this mean that someone would have to go and measure each slope, or is that data on a map?
No, you'd have to calculate. But it's fairly easy to do. It's not...
But if you're doing new construction, you're having your septic system designed, and all that would... They would have a... That information would be coming up anyway to analyze your site, so...
And then the second option is, this is one we tweaked based on a couple of different samples, is the setback based upon the width of the vegetated buffer. So, as the vegetated buffer, the smaller it is, the setback is increased, and over 100 feet, you know, it's the standard 100 feet. But it's based on a forested buffer, which is the most effective, you know? So, if you had a buffer less than 25 feet, the setback would be 300 feet on that.
But...
You can bear it.
So, is 300 feet of which, less than 25 feet is vegetated?
Yeah.
What's the other... What's the other 250 feet?
Well, the 250 feet is the zone, but the... Well, we're basing this on, we're kind of ignoring shore... Just the shoreline boundary and saying, if you have an insufficient buffer along the water, the setback needs to be increased dramatically to account for the lack of, you know, sufficient buffering near the water on that.
But I'm still struggling with what...
It might be grass. It might be whatever. But your building or your septic system can't go in any closer than 300 feet. So, it's encouraging deeper...
Well, no, this was... This was looked at for mostly manure.
Oh, manure?
Yeah, mostly manure.
Oh, okay.
What about the upper chart?
The upper chart, that's manures. All of these are all.
These are all manure?
All manure, yeah.
And the backside?
And the backside, too. Now, there were some, in some locations, where it was down to 50, and then they would vary. Pennsylvania, I think Virginia, all had 50. Some counties increased it as you went closer to, you know, larger water bodies or near the coastal water, they were increased, you know, dramatically.
Are these piles or these facilities?
It would be... We don't distinguish in shoreline zones. It's either, it's a storage of manure, so whether it's a stacking or a storage field.
I thought it was storage facility, but...
Because field stacking is just as onerous as a storage facility on that.
More so, probably.
Bill, I just want to ask a question. So, these are great, but when we're looking at the 300-foot setback, and then we refer back to Matthew Randall's statement, how increasing the setbacks beyond the state limits would have to be looked at by state legal department?
Absolutely.
Is this... Okay, so this isn't something we could just undertake, get it through?
The way it works is we would submit our proposal.
Okay.
I believe they have 90 days to... Actually, it says we have to submit it 90 days before we're going to vote, basically, for them to comment on it. And they could say, you know, we don't like it, or like it, or whatever, or make a suggestion.
I have a comment to make back on that fellow's statement about the dogs.
Yes?
And what I've found is that there's lots of people don't think they need to pick up their dog. And there's not really any way to regulate it. You can ask somebody many times, and if they don't want to do it, they don't do it. And so, you know, those people aren't necessarily walking along the shoreline, but some of them might be. I mean, how big a problem is that? I guess we don't really know.
You mean all the homeowners in the shoreline that have the dogs, maybe?
Yeah, or...
That would affect the parks?
Homeowners, people walking around, you know? I mean, I'm just...[1722.54] I mean, I'm, I'm just, I mean, we're addressing manure, but there's, for farm animal manure, but there's dog animal manure too.
Not piles, though.
If it's, if it's a turing in a drainage way, it's gonna get to the water eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah. But if it's out in the field somewhere and there's no water body or...
Right.
But along the, the roadways are the, the culverts and that's where it gets kicked, according to my neighbors.
Yes. But all sorts of other nasties, oil.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Minerals, you know.
But it's another awareness, I think it's another public awareness issue.
Daryl, they were concerned really about like the one kennel that we have in town, right? So, because that would have a larger volume of dog manure.
Yeah, usually they have a contained area, you know, hopefully they dispose that problem.
Well, yeah, and they have to get all those permits from the state for, for that. So they're probably doing it to their responsibility.
But this was just an example of some things that, you know, and then there's two other options in the back. One would be located outside of the shoreline zone and then the fourth option is a hundred-foot setback, subject to BMPs. So you would, um, you know, have a, like an appendix of best management practices and the person would select the BMP that would work the best for his or her situation on that. And that, that's a very effective approach, you know, 'cause BMPs get, let you choose something and you choose something based on how effective it is to the slope or soils or whatever.
Is there an option five?
Well, you could add something else.
Do nothing?
I put that there for, for new life...
Sometimes it's a strategy.
Well, I think...
This is just a brainstorm.
Yep.
Right, but I, I'm, I'm, personally, I find it attractive, the concept of this option four, in the sense that, that the setbacks don't have to be changed from a state requirement, but we could, we could impose something between the 100 and the 250 foot as part of the shoreline zoning that, um, that for all of these items that we've talked about here, manure tillage, um, whatever, grazing, that, um, that they follow best management practices and include, um, you know, um, getting this agric, I mean, there was, in other words, something to, to encourage inclusion of the state agriculture department because they're, um, you know, they're, um, and what I understood from Abdin and Julie as well is that they're very, they've been very responsive and that may be a good way to avoid getting into any legal issues and satisfies, um, at least Matthew's interest in not, um, not modifying the setbacks.
But are you, are you talking about farms with 50 or more animals or whatever the weight requirement is versus hobby farms or just any place?
Talking about anything.
Talking about manure.
Yeah.
Berries.
Yeah, the, the, the fourth option, you could apply, you can apply it beyond, into the watershed and beyond just manure storage and you can vary the setbacks, you know, from, you know, outside of shoreline zone, it could be much less, but, but again, you would employ, the BMPs you would employ would, would vary too. And you, I mean, some BMPs, you could, you could actually reduce the setback, but have a more sophisticated best management practice or structure in place. And that would be like one of the, the choices you would have, you know. Setback and buffer are the least expensive ways of dealing with that, but you could say, geez, I want to spend a lot of money and put in this sophisticated storm drainage or containment system, which, as long as it worked and it was designed properly and maintained properly, that's the other feature too, is anything we put in place has to be maintained over time differently. I mean, even buffers have to be.
Yeah. We had a, where I used to live in Connecticut, there was a, a large dairy farm with an extraordinarily large liquid manure storage pond, um, which they used to fertilize all, 'cause they felt, fed the corn, you know, corn tillage to the, to the cows. And it was very close to a, a waterway that actually fed a public water supply.
Really?
And, yeah, and, but it, it had all the things that it needed and it was, it was, never had any problems in the 20 years that I, that it was in and it was approved and, and it reeked, but it, but it didn't leak.
Reeked, but didn't leak. That's protecting them right there.
It is doable.
I know.
It's very doable.
Yeah, it's not inexpensive.
No, no, I, um, they obviously had no other place to put it. They should have, 'cause it would have cost less, but, um...
But the other, I, I'm, I'm just kind of curious as to how many hobby farmers really say, oh, I want to find out what best management practices are.
No, and that's why I say it's on, probably more on us or us as the town or however we represent to go out and educate. If, if this is something that we feel strongly about, it's motivating either a committee or the select board or us as a planning board to make recommendations to do the outreach. Because, quite frankly, not everyone's going to go seek out this information.
I think some, a lot of people don't even know that there is such a thing as best management practices.
That's new information.
We certainly need a water quality, you know, river quality awareness is, is critical. There again, I don't think we can, and I think that would be an issue potentially with the state, is that, not that there may not be that many cases in town that it would affect, but you could, you could see if, if you just wanted to arbitrarily increase the setbacks and somebody's got a mile, a mile-long strip, um, that you're taking 150 feet away from, it could be, you know, quite a bit of acreage that's being withheld. A bigger map, how cool. Oh, farms.
Farms on shoreline.
That is wonderful.
I've been annoying everyone with this ask for how long?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
This is awesome.
So looking at a map and then comparing it to what Daryl has on file, these are all the different farms in Waldeboro that do have part of their land in the shoreline zone. They're the sort of dirty orange color.
Yeah.
Since this is also an overlap with a land use one. There are some that are just scattered all over and there are some that are sort of budding each other. It's hard, it was hard to differentiate some of them. You'll see there's a huge cluster over in, um, in Goshen Road as well as, again, this is only ones that have even a smidge. Like these could be, uh, land as big as this room and just that, where my chair is over at the recording stock, that could be part of the shoreline zone and I included that in this. But, for example, you're not going to see Sarah's farm on this map, but you'll find her neighbors.
Right, I see my neighbors and I don't really have a farm, so, I don't have a farm.
But that was another point that got brought up too, um, or at least one question that was raised.
Yeah.
Um, when we asked about increasing the setbacks to 200 feet and I remember it was a, I never met him before, Clint Collmore, he said, well, what if the farm's only 200 feet wide to begin with? And I thought, oh, that's funny. So if this is only as big as this room, it could be an issue.
Where are you?
I'm over here, but I'm not on the, on any water.
Well, and these are also just farm...
You have a stream, all right.
It also just farms, so these aren't any of the tree growth spots or open space ones we have as well.
Oh.
And, yeah, just any shoreline considered areas, so there might be a burl pool or there might be a little stream, but unless it was on the shoreline map, it's not, I didn't put it on there.
Right here.
And the rough number I got for all those farms was about 55.
55 ponds.
Also have shoreline zone.
You didn't happen to have acres as well?
They're so close to water there.
Wow.
Yeah, acres, square miles, anything?
Acres, no.
Okay. No, just curious.
And do that next time.
That says two things off the top to me. One is...
Well, most of these are also wetland related stuff.
Right, but, but, yeah, but, but one is, that means even more an emphasis on education and, 'cause there's a lot of people to get. And then, two is though, you could really be taking away a lot from, potentially, from some of these, like this one in the upper left on, off of Orf's corner, corner, right? There's a lot bright going along the shore there. I wonder how far, how close their farm goes. But, anyway, there's a lot of people that could potentially be affected.
There's a lot of water that could potentially be affected.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a lot of potential collaborative stakeholder partners with the town. We have room to make new friends.
Yes. That's one thing that Matthew emphasized and he gave a couple of good examples of, of either, you know, an issue or perceived issues and going in and working with the, um, with the landowner and being able to, you know, like encouraging a couple of changes on the behart, behart of the, part of the land or the farmer and then never having any issues. That, that these guys, at least, you know, Matthew certainly gave the impression that he knows what he's looking for and that they can, they can work with people to, to make something that, that can work for everybody, which is the partnership part that you're talking about. Nobody wants, nobody wants to be messed. I don't know of many people these days that are, really don't care about the waterways. You know, it's more ignorance or not thinking about it or, you know...
He's not used to doing it any other way.
Yeah.
So what does, um, could you just, what does limited residential mean again? In shoreline zone?
In shoreline zone. It's, it's a zone that allows most residential uses to occur near the shoreline. Very humid, commercial, like home occupations would be allowed, some community activities.
Basic home.
So there's nothing reflective of, no matter what, the minimum lot size is, two acres outside of village?
Well, in shoreline zone, it's, the minimum from the state is 40,000 square feet, an acre. And 200 feet of frontage on the water butt.
So limited residential actually means limited business kind of activity in the residence?
Yeah, it's mostly residential, recreational, some civic type uses. And then again, you typically, or agriculture would be allowed and commercial would probably be limited, just to home occupations. It's very varied.
As opposed to only a few people can live there as limited residential.
I can, um, send everybody the link to the main Farmland Trust thing that talks about engaging community in, in farming.
Oh, that would be helpful.
Practices and stuff like that, for what, for what it's worth, might be interesting.
Yeah, that would be great.
Max, as a personal question, this, I see this farm here on Dutch Neck and I don't know what farm that is.
That's actually three, I believe. I'd have to find, I don't have the addresses, but, and, but I can certainly...
I'll pay more attention, but I don't, I don't remember, I don't, didn't knowingly drive by anybody farming.
If they're haying their fields?
Oh, haying, oh, oh, hey, oh, yes, yes, yes. Oh, okay, hey.
This could be all vegetable growing.
Okay.
This is just what I, this is just what Daryl had on the office that said.
All right. And, and mine's not on there, but that's okay. 'Cause I have my berries, so I'm actually officially a farm now.
Your berries have you.
That we have, that we have sales. We have sales, so...
Well, if you want to go to Daryl and say you're a farm, go ahead.
I believe we did that. We'll have to see how that goes.
No, you'd know if you went to Daryl and told him you were a farm.
Yeah, but it takes a while to get onto the maps.
No, 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 yeah, it takes a while to get on, to get on the map.
Are these farms registered in the farm and open space tax classification? Is that how Daryl knows about them?
Believe so. There's a map in his office that says farm. I can get it right now, but I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay.
Part of the case. He, if it's used in farming, he, he has a different way of, of, of creating the value of the land, so that's part of this. It's not just necessarily those that are registered as open space.
Not necessarily registered, okay.
So moving forward with the shoreline thing, I would still like to, uh, I just can't believe we have captured everything. We might have with the definitions. I'm wondering if there's some things that could be added, even pulled from the main body, 'cause it might be relevant in the shoreline. Anyway, definitions, I haven't studied it.
But across, you've said across the entire ordinance, not just in shoreline buffer.
There's not a definition, I was just saying, there's not a definition of buffer.
So we have, we're gonna vote on this in June? Is that what we're doing? Submit it to the public in June? Okay.
What I would recommend is that, at some point in time, well, like maybe four or five months before now, we present it to the council again. So we're not, we don't do a last minute.
Yep. So shoot for a march...
Because we have to do a public hearing yet.
Yes, shoot for like a march before the select board.
March, march, march rate.
So are we saying right now to not change anything? I, I'm gonna do some more reading.
Yeah, best management practices, I think, would be a good start for all of us to really educate our, what, what would be your suggestion on how to get prepared?
Personally, I would, I would want to coordinate most of this with the more general watershed plan.
Okay.
Water. There's a method to my madness. I think it takes some of the sting out of just concentrating on farming.
If everybody has to share.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we're not just picking on farmers, we're, you know, not, not that we're picking on anybody, but activities that have the potential to erode or create pollution that we're kind of treating everybody fairly.
So how would you suggest doing that?
When we start doing the ordinance review. I think we can link it into, um, stormwater and erosion and then we have, we have a section, we have a paragraph in our ordinance that says, uh, water quality and that's where we need to start fleshing out. And that's where we can start referencing BMPs. Because if we're gonna talk about BMPs, we have to have them in our offices and we have to have them online or available online so people can go and research them and, you know, so there's, all of those things have to get in place. And some of them are, some of them are out there off the shelf, but we just need to make sure we get access to them.
And what was that presentation you were gonna do? Wasn't there, is that addressed?
Climate adaptation.
Everyone laughs when that comes up, but was that anything that's...
I want to see it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very basic.
It's the climate change.
But we'll, we'll schedule it in another time.
Yeah, we've been, I think by the time we get to, we're gonna have to do it off-site with drinks.
That's an excellent idea.
Because it's just gonna be too, we've waited too long for this. It's like, you know, it's like graduation. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that and I think, um, I think we can take comfort in that there's some rationality and data behind the 100-foot setbacks.
Possibly being tested to prove.
Yeah, so, yeah, and so it's, so if, if I would, if I had to choose today, I would say I would prefer to add, to add some things to this in terms of, of information and maybe best management practices or something to, and, and I think regardless of that, we should, we can, we should work on the kind of awareness issue and how we want to attack that, but, you know, I, I personally, at the moment, I don't see any reason to change the 100 feet. I don't think, I think the most critical thing is getting people to, to obey it, to, to be aware of it and to be aware of things that they're doing on their property. That's my personal opinion, but with that in mind though, I think that, as Barbara said, we've been talking about awareness issue for a long, for five years, as well as the, a simpler application and, you know, making sure people in town are aware of the, of the planning board things. So, um, I'd, I'd like to, like to ask everybody to maybe take an assignment that, for our next meeting, assuming there's time, that, that we'd all come with some, I think some concrete ideas about what we really should do in terms of, um, public awareness about the, the river and the potential, at first step at least, what's I think important, the potential for conflict between agriculture and the aquaculture. And then, secondly, is just an overall homeowner awareness of these kind of issues.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'd like, I'd, I think I'd like people to think over the next, until the next, between now and the next meeting, to come back with some, if, with, and we can brainstorm some ideas.
Some public education.
Of what we act, yeah, of a specific action that we could actually take to educate the public on some of these basic shoreline issues.
Expand it beyond farming. Any kind of development that could potentially cause...
Right. Affecting the shoreline, we can use agriculture as an example, but I'm, yeah, I'm fine with that. But I think, you know, maybe we should spend 800 dollars to mail in to everybody in town. to mailing to everybody in town. In which case, if we all felt strongly that that's what we should do, we can then lobby the Julie to, to give us the money. But maybe there's some other ideas that are cheaper or maybe even more effective. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just saying that if we all put our heads together and think about it and come up with some ideas, let's actually do it.
So what you're suggesting is that the idea of best management practices really includes everybody in town and how they, how they, how they, what they do on their land?
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily call it that for like a general public information, cause people aren't gonna know what that is, but the general idea of.
No, but we'd have to, we'd have to define it, but, but that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, basically.
That everybody take best care of their land.
Everybody needs, everybody in town needs to take.
So it doesn't.
Take ownership of protecting, you know, two million dollars a year of clams coming, plus the lobsters. And I think take ownership for protecting agriculture too. There's, that's important.
I think that is really important. I just wanna say, we, it might, just for the sake of not all having the same three or four ideas, it might be helpful to think about target populations. Maybe we should outreach to the clambers and think how they could best assist us. Maybe we should think about specifically targeting the farmers or the business associations. So anything, spitball anything. And targeted outreach can sometimes be really beneficial as well. So, but I do like the idea of that general outreach is, hi, you're new in town. How can we help you best keep your property from messing up our economy?
Yep. My, I'm, I just came up with an idea, which is we could save money by just, by including our literature on awareness into Daryl's tax bill.
Exactly.
That he sends out.
We all read that thing.
Saving mailing costs. But, no, I like that idea.
This is why our taxes are going up. That's what people say.
Yeah, but I, I think targeted is, is a good idea. So, but I, but I think we.
Include a coupon for something. I'm serious.
Oh, I love coupons.
Something like that. You know, there was a transfer station that would, willy nilly would hand out these little, they were in the shape of a coin and they were just, I don't know, somebody got them. And if they saw somebody recycling a lot, somebody, the transfer station attendant would go over and give this, somebody this coin. And the, the coin was worth for, you know, free disposal of a refrigerator or tire. People loved it.
Oh, yeah.
They loved it. I mean, it was like, you weren't giving them anything, you know? They could dispose of something free and they just went bananas. And they didn't, they didn't do it regularly. They just did it serendipitously.
Yeah.
That was here in Waldeboro?
No, no, it wasn't in Waldeboro. I didn't think so, no.
Well, they.
It was in Nusselboro, actually.
Oh, that's awesome.
But I would say that the, that the, the river is cleaner now than when we first came to the area just from the clambers and lobstermen picking up after them, you know, you know, being.
Better stewards.
Better stewards of their environment there. And I would think that they would know a lot too about what homeowners are doing.
Yeah. They cross my property all the time.
Yes. Indeed. So that would, that's, so that, so, but I think if we all spend some time thinking about it and then let's work towards that.
That's excellent. It looks like we don't have a pre-app here, huh?
No.
Yeah.
And do we have an, an application for next month that you know of? Maybe this pre-app?
It'll, it'll be Jeff with his B and B.
Okay.
Boy, I wish, I wish there were more, I guess. More.
It would be located on, uh, Main Street near the fork with.
Oh, at his house?
Yeah.
Near the fork with what?
Old County Road, old, old route line.
Okay.
What would be located there?
The B and B.
Oh, this is the application that we haven't got.
Yes.
We're expecting all of it.
So his home?
Yep.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, we totally could.
Definitely could.
Yeah.
See, that could be the prize.
Get a free draft beer.
It's a giveaway, yeah.
Yeah.
Within walking distance.
Oh, yeah, right up the road.
So the only thing about this, Scott, in terms of priorities, it's like we've got the most recent thing you wanna do first, which is next month, not the way of looking at short term or long, you know, the quick app versus the long-term app, the longer app for, but maybe we're not ready to do this. Or welcome to Waldeboro, here's how you do business in Waldeboro brochure. You know what I mean? We, we came, come up with a couple of different ideas that we haven't pursued.
Yeah.
And now you want us to work on the shoreline. The last one first.
I wanna work on all of them, but I'm, I'm happy changing the pri, I don't, I'm not worried about the priority. I just think that, um, so.
But I do think it's a good idea if we have a slow winter to.
Yeah.
Come up with a schedule for these things.
Right. Yeah.
You know?
This is just something I think relating to what you just said, Barbara, about different approaches.
Bill's gonna think.
Yeah. Um, you know, it's just a couple of things and they're, they're not mutually exclusive. You can combine some of these ideas and things like that. And some of these things we've put in the comp plan already in terms of, um, beefing up performance standards, things like that. And also looking at, um, kind of scaling the activities, like lower intensity commercial uses would just get reviewed outside of the planning board and others would be, you know, still go to the planning board. And another one that I put in there toward the end was eliminating site review and using what's called conditional use. And we need to chat about that a little bit differently. That's just a different approach, but it's, it is a technique that's worthy of talking about. Might not be suitable for Waldeboro, but it's, but it is another.
Conditional use is, that's what number is that?
That's in the, I think in the backside, number five, number five.
Conditional use.
That, that's kind of a dramatic departure, but maybe some elements of that could be worked into the site review process. But one good thing that we need to do here is we need to have review criteria, not just for the planning board, but also for the code officer. So when a permit's issued, they check off meets this and this, you know, real generic thing. And we lack that right now.
Yeah, we don't have that now?
No.
What, we have that list.
All right.
There was a list, but.
I've got it right here.
That the code enforcement officer also looks at?
No, it, it has to be in the ordinance. It's similar to what, like we use for subdivision, subdivision review. You know, there's twenty-two review criterias that has to be looked at.
Yes, he's talking about a universal one.
Yeah. Something a little, but it adds some, what it does is it unifies both the planning board activity and the code officer activity. Cause you're basically gonna be using the same ones. The planning board might add a couple of extra.
Yeah.
We need to bring those two closer together.
So if we use, let's, maybe this isn't a good example, but I'm, I'm just thinking of some of the last few applications that we've talked about. This one that we did tonight is an example. The, we just recently did one regarding the storage facility that's going in, that they changed their design a little bit.
Right.
Um, there's been a couple of others recently.
Even the insurance office.
The medical marijuana caregivers in the insurance office. So, I know we've talked about the short form application for a long time, but in all of these instances, I don't recall us as a board getting bogged down too much in process. I'm, I just wanna make sure, I wanna, I'm not sure I understand, I wanna make sure we revisit and understand completely what we're trying to solve. In that, are we trying to make it easier for the applicants or easier for the board?
A little bit of both.
I think both. And, and we, the perception is it's complicated and there are lots of pages of paperwork.
Yes. So, and I, I agree with that. If you look at the whole thing and the question is, is that, is that in fact, you, I, I can see where it would be difficult for people coming to apply to fill that out. But I'm looking to Max and Bill here, cause they've helped more applicants prepare for this. Are we, is it, is it a good thing for them to have to go through all that so that they don't miss something?
It can take sixty days, depending on your, your sequence to get in front of the planning board, for something that might take ten minutes to review here. It just, this, it, the level of time and review doesn't match the.
Complexity of the project?
Complexity of the development.
Okay, all right.
And that's where, but we have to beef up the other end too.
But why would it take sixty days for a simple project?
Well, it depends on when you make the application. I mean, it could take, you, you just might get, you know, approach Max, you know, a day after the deadline. You know, and then it might take a while, you know, to pull everything in. And it might take the applicant a while to.
And if they have to get permissions from the state and stuff, certifications and stuff like that?
I mean, it, it's not a big deal if it, it's, that's not an issue if it's a complex, you know, develop. And that's where we want, you know, a higher level of review.
Yeah.
But when we don't, you know, what are we, you know, we're just adding bureaucratic levels that doesn't match, again, like you said, the complexity of it on that.
So, but I get the impression for some of the, some of the applicants, like the, the dog kennel and some of these things, you guys have helped them through the process. So is that, is that, was that useful or just time, you know, a waste of everybody's time?
It's not a waste of time, but it's time differently spent because if, if we were doing the review, it would be more condensed, you know.
If you guys.
If we were, if, you know, if it was, if it wasn't a complex and there was a lot of, it would, it would just happen much more quickly.
Okay.
You know, that's, it would be the only difference.
Like, most of them are sort of change of use. Those are the one technical ones we're throwing, we have to sort of have in for the planning board to always do. Like even Jeff's, that's still gonna be a change of use, cause right now it's a home, but now it's gonna be a B and B.
Yeah.
So that's part of the application and the other part's the B and B itself. Like, if, if it was placed anywhere else in town, you just had to go to the CEO, but you would still have to get you guys to approve change of use.
Yeah.
So that's kind of one of those.
And so he's going through all the other rigmarole just for a change of use.
So the B and B would be a home occupation?
No, it's a separate use.
It's, it's outside of the historic village?
It's, it's in the historic village.
Yep.
But I'm saying if it was outside of the historic village, if it was along Route One, for example, he would just need to go to Stan for a B and B approval, but he would need to go to the planning board to approve the change of use.
If it was on Route One?
If it was on.
Well, anywhere.
If it was anywhere.
Yeah.
Cause that one needs CEO approval.
Yeah.
There, there's some things we need to clean up.
Yeah. But I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, but it's just a question of what the requirements for a, a simple application like that would be.
I'm just giving you an example.
Is that sort of Barbara's getting at?
And that's part of the issue too. We know our performance standards have to get beefed up. Because if we, you know, if we had more standards, it would eliminate some of the nebulous areas on that. So that, that does have to happen. And we also have to make sure that the code officer permits are, you know, there's a review criteria and there's a little more time spent going through certain lines.
Yeah.
All of that has to go together. We're not just reducing, you know, what you do. It's complementary. Everything has to fit.
Yeah.
Cause you should be dealing with the, the complex issues.
I don't like the simple ones.
B and Bs are a little weird.
Yeah.
Some of the, no offense to B and B owners, if this ever gets leaked, but, you know, leaf papers, just wandering around and sharing rooms with strangers. I don't, what? What? Well, some of them, they have rooms in common. Like some of them, you like share breakfast with people or you share, um, like a living room or something.
You're talking about this in the age of Airbnb's. Just keep that in mind.
I will never do Airbnb. I'll take my terrifying hotel room.
Okay.
But I'm just, like Airbnb, that's a, just a CEO thing. I don't know that I just want somebody putting one in next to my home. Hmm. That just gives me the heebie jeebies.
Some people have relatives that are a little tricky looking together.
Oh, yeah. I, I, no, that's very true, Ted. Right. I'm sure we could all find a relative that would rather have a stranger visit, right?
That's a good point.
Exactly. Yeah. God, I hope my sister doesn't come back from Thailand. Anyway.
This is being taken, Scott.
Moving on. I know, but she'll, hopefully she'll never see it. No one will, no one will send it to her.
This is the, this is the one time she decides, oh, you know, I'm gonna watch Scott's phone.
Yeah, really. Yeah. I don't think she knows. Anyway, um, so, so as Barbara correctly summarized, so we have, we had talked about a how to do business in Waldeboro, sort of an introductory information, which is also an awareness of the planning board thing we've talked about. We have this short form application and we have the shoreline, uh, river cleanliness.
Water quality awareness.
Water quality awareness. There you go. So.
Now, these are, am I interrupting your train of thought?
No, you go ahead.
Like business in Waldeboro, we should probably, you know, Jen Merritt could probably knock this off in like two seconds, you know? Economic Development Committee.
Well, actually, Max.
Yeah.
Have you already done one?
Done for months and months ago.
What? Where is it? What are you gonna show us?
Bring it.
When the EDC decides to approve it.
They don't have to approve it before we, why do we have, why do they have to approve it before we see it?
I wasn't at the last meeting. I thought you, I thought you were gonna do it.
Can you bring a draft and just show it as a draft?
Yeah, we don't have to.
Yeah.
Why, why can't we feed into it? You know?
I'll grab it.
Okay.
You, you have to keep talking now.
I move, we, no, we could, we might be adjourned by the time you get back, no.
Does it have pictures?
Let me ask you a question, please. Where do we stand with the setback for septic waste?
I think that's still at a hundred feet.
Is that, is that also a hundred feet and are you happy with that? You didn't discuss that presumably with your agriculture guy.
Did not.
By state law and with proper degree of testing.
We haven't changed what's in the ordinance.
It's in the subsurface, yes.
A hundred feet is okay and you're all content with that?
Catelyn documented.
Not necessarily, but that's what's in the ordinance right now.
Well, I know, but we're trying to revise the ordinance. We're thinking about increasing setbacks.
We haven't suggested anything yet for.
There are two sort of prototypes.
Look at this, it's colored and everything.
Good heavens. What was that budget?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
We can't even get stamps and look at this.
This got through the economic.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
I did a very rough draft, but then Marcia Ransick did this sort of the kindness of her heart.
Oh, she's great.
So that, that was a three-fold original prototype and this is what we've had the latest of. It's a four-fold. Ted should know this. He's on the board.
Speaking of committees, has anyone applied to planning board?
No, not, no, no, no.
Scott, have you been working the neighbors?
If you know people who might be interested, please reach out. It's always tough to get these boards filled. And we need two members.
Yeah.
And this is the old Waldeboro.
Wow.
One of the things we might wanna talk about too, when we do the ordinance, is to get alternate members. So we get like a member or two, in case someone isn't here at the meeting, we can seat the alternate.
This is a little different than what we're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to get, we have to get people.
Well, this is supposed to be the grab attention and then, there's supposed to be a, a book to accommodate it, but we haven't.
It seems like we should all kind of coordinate at some point.
We haven't gone anywhere else yet.
Yeah. This has gotten.
I feel like you're pointing at me.
This was the first thing I did when I started working here.
I know.
It's not like yellowed or anything from ancient poaching.
Yeah, there's.
He keeps it in a glass container, Barbara.
Ah, yes.
That's right.
We do not wanna keep using the printer. We know that. I am so pleased that I got a nice color shoreline zone map.
This is, this is, this is really helpful.
Do you want this one with all the dirty orange or you want a different one where it's a clean one?
Well, we had, we wanted a large, this size version of a clean one. Yes, we, we do. We shall, we shall love having that.
So this is very promo, 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 but not really educational, informative.
Yeah, he's got, that's the next step.
That's the next step. Okay, that's the insert.
Which I have, but I've never looked at yet.
Yeah, he just has the, he has the.
So they've, they've used our name in vain without our permission, planning at Waldeboro Main Dar.
No, that's Max's email, I believe.
Well, yeah. Okay. I can see.
We'll, we'll let him hold the title.
Can we adjourn so we sit at the table? Oh, yeah, why don't we adjourn?
I, I happen to agree with that, but once we have a motion, we can't talk about anything else and we're almost done. So.
Okay. Is there any other business?
Well, I, I, so I think, I think for the next meeting, I, I'd be happy to have ideas on these other two items as well. And then we should, we should decide the next meeting, what we wanna do first. To, to me. To me, it seems like the Economic Committee is doing something on the doing business in Waldeboro that we can review. The short-form application thing might take some time. I'm just being concerned for the water quality. That was only... We can vote and decide which we want to do first, but if we can come up with a good idea that we like right away for the public awareness on the water quality, it seems to me that that ought to be something we could do quickly because we can write up something, you know, relatively fast, I think.
Well, it sounds like what we're talking about can potentially dovetail with what Business Association might be doing, Land Trust might be doing, Conservation Committee might be doing, and Economic Development. And I wonder if we should...
Don't forget the Clam Committee.
And the Clam Committee. Maybe we should sort of like put out feelers and find out what they're doing to those ends so we just don't, you know, do duplicates.
I...
One of the things that was in the plan, Sarah, was to have at least one meeting a month with all the committees. One meeting a year to kind of share where you're going that year, so everybody can... Just a meeting in this room, like an hour or something like that.
Have we done that before?
No.
Oh, okay, so...
So we can't email blast them because that... Oh, we...
Well, of course you can.
That's not operating outside of the...
No, no, no.
Okay, so if we were like, "Hey, this is what we're doing, and these are some ideas we had." What do you think?
Oh, absolutely.
Garner feedback?
Yes, in a way. I think all that's great, but my... If we come up with an idea that we like, we can put... I think we ought to be able to put something together relatively quickly. And if we decide to... It's sort of like writing... It's much easier to have one or two people write a draft and then other people edit. In the same way, if we get all those other groups involved before we decide that we're gonna try to do something, we'll still be talking about it next year.
Yeah, give them something to comment on rather than...
If we say, I would tend to do, "We are going to do this. We are going to do X next month unless this," you know? Because otherwise, you know, if we can't come up with anything that we like, then getting... You know, because I do like to... I think we open up the box to get more input from other people because somebody on one of those groups could have a really good idea, and, you know... So if we can see how we do next time, and... But if we like something, it's... As... Well, it's actually started from the president of the company that I worked for for a long time. At one point was General Boomer, who was the head marine in the Gulf, First Gulf War.
Was that really his name?
His last name was Boomer. But he was actually...
I wonder if he gave him a general.
But his... One of his phrases was, "It's always better to ask forgiveness than permission. It works faster."
Oh, jeez, that's all we need.
That's all we need, anyway.
So this is great. Before starting the application process for the creation of a commercial property, business owners should confirm that the property location they have chosen is within a land use district that would allow their specific operations. That's awesome, Max.
That's brilliant.
Thank you. You know what?
So this is...
The other thing is signs. Did you have a sentence in here about signs? When a business should... How they should deal with signs?
Well, I mean, I include the land use ordinance, the whole maker chart in there that should have sign in there, but I can include that. That's just a first draft.
Right, right. Well, that's my only comment, just looking at it quickly that...
Can you send us all over so we can read it?
It's a draft. Maybe you should work on it some more.
Yeah, I can send the word document. I don't know whether that's gonna be... I don't know what that's gonna look like for the final draft, but sure.
Oh, okay, so you'd rather work on it longer before?
Well, I need to see what the EDC has to say about it before...
Okay.
Oh, but this... Well, wait a minute. This is... This is a lot about the ordinance, right? Why does the EDC have... Why is this EDC to...
Because they wanted to create a pamphlet to sort of draw in businesses, and then that would be sort of the welcome package for a business.
That's like how you should... Next steps.
They were the ones that originated the...
Yeah.
But they haven't gotten past the promotion.
So we're gonna steal it from them, and we will run with this, and we'll finish the darn thing. This is... There's no reason why this can't be something that we do as the Planning Board. This is directly... This is directly the planning... This is the Planning Board process, right?
I have no problem if you guys want to do this in conjunction with the EDC, and I just update them. Like, you can run with that, and then by the time they're done with the pamphlet, you can probably have another draft that I can then show them.
Yeah, I mean, will you be in trouble with them if you share this with us?
We asked.
Hey, Tara, Ted, am I gonna be in trouble?
No, I'm just saying...
We'll definitely tell them where you live.
As long as we're sharing the final results and everyone has a chance to look at it, it won't be a problem with...
I mean, I think it'd be fine since getting your perspective is with it as well, and you're just as much a part of it, so...
Well, since this is gonna lead into a process that we might end up with a short form for, I'd hate to have them do a lot more with this and consider it final, and then we come in and tell them they need to change it. I think early exposure is better myself, but...
Yeah, that's fine.
So if you're willing to...
You can just leave it right there.
This is the... All this stuff goes back to Max. Throw it on the pile, okay?
Awesome.
Yeah, I'll send that out then.
Thank you. That's great.
We adjourn.
I second it, unless you have anything else to say.
It's done now. Oh, I have lots to say, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thanks, everybody. Welcome to almost fall.
Yeah, it's dark.